All right, so it is approximately 5:33 here on Tuesday, September 2. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting. Just to let everyone know, this is being recorded by Area 58 and will be available on YouTube. Joining me for the Board of Selectmen is myself, Jonathan Seelig, Selectmen Thomas Pratt, Selectmen Billy Smith, as well as members of the Finance Committee. They'll be opening their meeting shortly. And the purpose of tonight's meeting for the Board of Selectmen side is a joint meeting to appoint a possible candidate for the empty position on the Halifax Finance Committee. So let me just make sure I have all the ducks in a row here. I could pull it up there, I guess. Hold on one sec. I want to just make sure Bob gave me a great summary sheet. I just want to make sure that I'm crossing all my Ts and dotting all my Is here. Bear with me. But I guess while I do that, Jim, if you want to open your meeting, I think that's safe to do.
Absolutely, I can certainly do that. So we will call to order the meeting of the Halifax Finance Committee. For the purpose of this meeting, it is being recorded and will be posted on the Area 58 Community Access Channel. Committee members currently in attendance: Cheryl Burke, Mike Bennett, Frank Johnston, Ed Bryan, and myself, Mike Rignetta. I don't see him on, so he is MIA at this point in time. But we do have a quorum and we can proceed. All votes will be done via roll call as this is a virtual meeting.
Excellent work, Jim. I gotta go to the Jim Walter School of Meeting Openings. Nicely done. And then I'm gonna read here, just as per the Halifax Town Code, Section 13-10-2. "A majority vote of the offices entitled to vote from both boards is required to appoint a new Finance Committee member", let me see here, "to a position that became vacant due to resignation. So the appointed individual will serve the balance of the unexpired term of the committee member who resigned." So again, it'll be just for the time that bill was due to leave the board. And then we opened our meeting. And now myself will do pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F. I just want to make sure I get in there, that we're being recorded as Area 58. And then we have our candidate here this evening. I think I saw you there, Rodney. Rodney, you around?
I am indeed.
Okay, excellent. So how this will work is, I did watch your interview with FinCom. Kudos to you. It was a great representation, I think, of what you're all about. But I just wanted to let you know, you'll have about three minutes if you want to make an opening statement to the board. Doesn't have to be three minutes, but just up to three minutes, just about yourself, why you're interested, what you think you bring to the table. And then afterwards, I'll open it up for questions to any members of both FinCom or the Board of Selectmen that they might have for you, Rodney, as far as appointing you to the FinCom board.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I thank you all for inviting me tonight for the potential appointment to serve until the remainder of Bill's term. I'm excited about the potential to be part of this team in this committee to help serve our town that we all care so much about. And I'm excited because I've served on various boards in my professional capacity as an occupational therapist with an agency in Boston called VNA Care or VNA of Boston. I'm also have been a longtime coach of track and field across country, as well as been a collegiate athlete. And I know and understand the importance of teamwork as a means to succeed together and to make the whole greater than the individual. So I'm looking forward to doing that and working with everyone here, learning from them, their time served on the board, and their professional roles in their lives outside of the board, and seeing what I can bring to the table to best support, and propagate success for the town of Halifax, which I'm really excited to do.
Excellent. Thank you, Rodney. I'll open it up to either board. Is there anybody? I guess we could do it with a raise hand function, maybe? Is there anybody that has a question for Rodney? I mean, I can start if you want. Rodney, I'll just offer out, obviously, the main driver of this position is budgetary. Budget experience that you have that might be appropriate, and then just collaboration experience with working with others, whether it's department heads or the rest of FinCom. So again, twofold, budget experience and collaboration experience.
Yeah, I've worked in a budgetary capacity in addition to managing the budget in my household. I've worked in school systems where I worked in a special department. And it was a very collaborative department for ordering supplies and making sure that we have the things needed to care for our students, as well as perspating hiring or interviewing a potential colleagues in order to be able to have them come on our team and find the right fit in order to establish a strong team for our students and for our school. I also serve and served on a labor board in order to help with making sure that our agency has the services needed and the clinch is necessary to meet our patients' needs, as well as be conscious of budgetary constraints for care and making sure that we're meeting our financial targets for our agency. So supporting that through my clinical work, as well as collaboration with management and my colleagues to make sure that kind of thing happens. And I also worked and still work as a track coach, part-time, as assistant coach. So we have a budget every year that we spend for team travel and in support for athletes to compete in various events. So that's the kind of stuff.
Excellent. Anybody, before I hog all the questions, anybody else have a question for Rodney?
I'll take one.
Go ahead. You're up. This is Thomas Pratt.
This is Tom. Yep, talking to Tom. How you doing? I watched the Finance Committee meeting when you were interviewed along with Sean, and you were both very impressive and tough call, and I agree with the appointment. I congratulate you on your potential appointment here. I don't really have so much a question because most of my questions are answered. You're joining a pretty thorough and experienced board that's put the town in the best shape possible. My big thing that I always like to point out to people is that you're joining something that's pretty public, pretty high-profile, and in this year, pretty high stakes. So if you could talk to me just for a brief minute about how you might separate things you read online, you feel from friends or, you know, social media posts, how do you separate that from what you feel is your opinion on a finance committee in a pretty high-pressure, high-stakes situation we have facing us?
Yeah, it's a really good question. It's important. It's a matter of taking things in perspective, not taking things personally, understanding you're not gonna be able to please everybody. The goal is the fiduciary well-being of the town and making sure that we're creating a budget that's fair and supporting the department heads and how they create their budget within the constraints of the town's finances. That there'll be people who don't like decisions that we make, people who will ask for additional things that we just can't recommend, and we have to, you're not gonna be able to please everybody. And that's an important thing to appreciate because if you're a people pleaser who only wants everyone to be happy and pleased with them, this would be a challenging position to succeed at. So knowing that as long as you're sticking to what we are meant to do as a board and we make the recommendations as, sorry, as a committee, then chips fall where they may as far as people's opinions or comments. And I have a pretty thick skin. I'm pretty fair-minded and stable as far as I don't react too much to online criticism and things like that. So just, I'm also human, so I will, I would like our decisions to be accepted in an adult manner. But sometimes you can't control how the people respond. You can only control how you respond. So that's what I'll, and I'll be learning from the other members of the committee about how they handle that type of, that type of stress and the responses and the comments and seek their guidance as I try to fulfill my duties as a member of this committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? I have one more, but anybody else want to go next?
I have one, John. And Rod, I know we probably talked about this last time. And just to kind of dovetail into what Tom had said, it's gonna be a pretty tough year for the town, especially when it comes to planning for next year and the revenues that we anticipate getting, new growth, et cetera. How do you envision communicating some of the challenges or changes or, you know, whatever we need to do to manage the budget and meet the budget? How do you anticipate getting that out to the public for public consumption to kind of alleviate some of the stress at town meeting?
Yeah, I think that's something I know you guys talked about a couple, when we met in August, is trying to be forward-facing, give people opportunities, whether or not we as a committee decide that we're gonna have, you know, public office hours or meet somewhere, have one of us available on a rotating basis where we are available to answer questions or so people have an opportunity and know we're accessible, where one of us sits somewhere and says, hey, these hours we're gonna be available. I don't know if there's already something, a function like that in the committee, but making people appreciate that they can come talk to one of us and have their questions heard because a lot of people, one of their major things that they would like to understand and appreciate is that we're hearing them. Even if we don't always agree or are unable to fulfill the requests that they have, by knowing that we heard what they said, that they've had a chance to air their needs, I think that can bring down some of the fire that they experience, the emotional impact. They can get that out at a later time or an earlier time or a different time. But I think that we do need to do a better job, or I don't think the committee's doing a bad job. I think that helping bring down that sort of emotional fire that is presented at town meeting by having maybe some earlier sessions where we, it's listening, listening and understanding and appreciating. And hopefully that helps people to understand where we're coming from, what we need to do, what our fiduciary responsibilities are, and that we have an opportunity, or they have an opportunity to be heard.
Excellent. All right, that answer your question, Jim, I assume?
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else? All right, well, just really quickly, Rodney. So I don't know if they explained to you how this works. Is what likely happened is the board works, you'll be a liaison to some department, you know, whether it's police, highway, fire, somewhere, and you'll work closely with that department head to go over budgets during budget season. And I think our FinCom does a fantastic job of, they're friendly, they're civil, they're cordial to all of our town employees and our department heads, but they're not afraid to ask tough questions, you know, and they're not afraid to disagree. It might be a little difficult, but it might, it might come to a point where, you know what, you and a department head might not see eye to eye on a financial, you know, matter. So just wanted to touch base to make sure that, you know, you're comfortable regardless of a relationship with someone, that you're able to disagree, number one, but do it in a way that remains, you know, civil and professional.
Yeah, no, that's something that I strive to do in all my relationships when I have difficult conversations with people I disagree with, that we need to solve this or we need to do our best to solve it together. We may not agree, but just because we don't agree on something doesn't mean we can't remain civil. And if I'm still struggling in that interaction, I'll see guidance from the other committee members about how do they resolve or how have they successfully resolved a difficult conversation in the past as these are experienced individuals, and I'll just ask them for guidance if I'm not sure how to proceed.
Yeah, as I said, I think our board does a fantastic, I keep calling it board. Our committee does a fantastic job currently. I think we have an all-star team. So I think you're in good hands, Rodney, with whatever questions you might have. That's great. All right, anybody else, guys? Any other questions for Rodney before I entertain a motion to make an appointment here?
I think Frank has his.
Frank, is that a hand, Frank Johnston? If you're talking, Frank, we can't hear you.
Need to unmute Frank.
Is there an unmute button there, Frank? There you go.
No, I think you need to switch devices, Frank. Change the microphone.
Yeah, I can see the lips moving, Frank, but we can't hear you.
He's muted.
Yeah, he's muted. Yep. All right, give a holler, Frank. Oh, no, you're muted again. Still muted. There you go. Talk. No.
Can't hear him.
Let's see if I can lip read. Nope.
Frank, try jumping out and coming right back in. Just try jumping out of the meeting and coming right back in.
We won't, we won't talk about you when you leave. Man, not Frank Johnston.
23 seconds, Jonathan. That was timed.
Couldn't help myself.
But she probably can't get back in now.
Maybe if, maybe if I phone.
Yeah.
This has got to be some riveting YouTube video, let me tell you.
Yeah, it is.
If he's unable to, we unable to hear him, is there a mechanism by which he can submit the question in the chat?
Yeah, I think Caesar's on here. I think they're allowed to chat. There's a chat function. Look at that. Rodney thinking out of the box already. Frank Johnston just popped up. Right, can you hear us?
There he is.
I see his name.
Still no, still no audio.
Still can't hear him.
Jonathan, I mean, FinCom already asked questions and voted.
Say again?
FinCom already asked questions and voted for appointment. Do we need?
Oh, no, I know, I know. But I just, I just didn't know if there were all other questions that they wanted to make, you know, with the Board of Selectmen here for us to hear. So I was offering them another chance. But yeah, I did watch that video, and it was excellent. And it was a great base for me to make my decision. Frank Johnston. So again, guys, just to summarize, there'll have to be a majority of voters. So there's nine voting numbers, I believe, six FinCom and three Selectmen. So at least five will have to vote yes for this to happen. Frank Johnston, if you can hear us too, maybe try sending a question in.
Are you gonna go on your phone?
Okay. It's too bad, too. We had a nice background shot. It looked great. Very, very fall.
He's gonna write it down and hold up the question.
I love technology, huh?
Technology's great when it works.
Yes, it is. And while we're killing time here, I did bump into one Mr. Todd Darji. Where was I going? I don't know, Dunkin' Donuts or somewhere. So he wanted to make sure I wished the FinCom his best. So it's good to see Todd again.
Back from his summer in Paris for the Olympics.
Yes, he says he's been back and forth to Paris many times. I said, that's awesome.
Good for him.
Good for him. Yeah, that's great.
What a life.
Frank Johnston.
He's never been so quiet.
I know. Rodney, things usually run much smoother. Just want to let you know. This is, this is an albatross. It usually doesn't happen. Okay. Does Frank usually have connection trouble?
No.
No.
Usually not, no.
No, it's usually me.
I don't know if he was in a black hole, you know, in a tough reception spot somewhere.
What was he signaling though? He was doing with his phone. Is he trying to?
I think he was gonna call, I guess.
Yeah, I don't.
Frank, do you want to type your question into the chat?
I know there was a recent update on Zoom, and if he got the new client, they could be giving him.
Oh, that's true. It went from like 8.6 to like 8.12 or something like that.
Yeah, that was a pretty good jump, yeah.
I'm sorry, guys.
He's coming.
We see him.
See his phone.
See his phone. I feel like this is a hostage video.
Only if he was holding up today's newspaper.
I know.
Hello?
There you are.
My apologies. I don't mean to hold everybody up here this evening.
That's okay. Did you, did you have a question, Frank?
I just wanted to just talk a little bit about respect to the audience when you're interacting with them and things of that nature, you know. It's important that we take the higher road.
Rodney, you have any reaction to that?
Other than I completely agree. I watched you guys at town meeting this past year at the last meeting, and you're all respectful throughout the process. And I think that was the professional way to handle it. You did excellent, and I aspire to be the same.
Excellent. Frank, did that answer what you were looking for?
Yes, it did.
Excellent. Okay. I will, I will entertain a motion to, do you guys think it's okay if we entertain a motion to approve Mr. Rodney Hemingway to fill the vacant? Let me make sure I get my wordage right here. The vacant seat on the Halifax Finance Committee?
So moved.
So that is Michael Bennett, Michael Bennett with a so moved, and then do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I heard EJ Bryan with a second. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote because it's online. I will start with my board, I guess, first. Bill Smith? Bill Smith, I say? And one more time, Bill Smith?
He gave a thumbs up. He's muted.
Oh, he's muted.
But he gave a thumbs up.
I don't know if we need, we might need.
You need voice.
We need voice.
We need an oral confirmation.
Okay, so you know what? We're gonna skip over him then. We're gonna go to Thomas Pratt.
Yes.
And then I'll just go right down the list here. Cheryl Zarella Burke?
Yes.
Michael Bennett?
Yes.
Frank Johnston?
Yes.
Mike Rignetta?
Yes.
All right, and Bill Smith? Can you hear us? And that's a yes. Okay. I think that's everybody by my count, and my MES as well. By my count, that is a nine to zero unanimous vote. Rodney, congratulations. Thank you for throwing your name in, for helping the town of Halifax. I am a little nervous. It does change the power of the board to the more follicle challenged. But I think we can work through that. But again, in all seriousness, Rodney, I think you're gonna be a great addition to the board, and you'll see we got an all-star team. So congratulations.
Thanks, Jonathan. Appreciate everybody. I'm looking forward to working with you all.
No worries. So FinCom, if you will entertain me here, I'm gonna shut down our meeting so we can get going, and you guys can do your, finish up where your agenda is here. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
So moved.
All right, I heard Bill Smith is so moved. And then do I have a second, Tom?
Second.
All right, so moved by Bill Smith, seconded by Thomas Pratt, motion to adjourn at 5:57. Bill?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Board of Select meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, guys. Good luck, FinCom. And Rodney, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectmen. All right, so we can go ahead and get on with our meeting. So I want to thank everybody for jumping on. Rodney, welcome aboard. We look forward to, you know, some mini meetings together. So, you know, buckle up because it's gonna be a fun year. So a couple of things. Let's start off with our standard agenda. So we have a couple of minutes out there that need to be accepted. So the first order is from July 21 of 2025. Has everybody had a chance to review these minutes? Are there any adds, changes, or deletions?
No.
There being none, roll call vote to approve the minutes from 7:21:25. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mike Bennett?
Yes.
Frank Johnston?
Yes.
EJ?
Yes.
Mike Rignetta?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Those will go through as approved. Next set that we had was from the 11th, so August 11 of 2025. Has everybody had an opportunity to read through those minutes?
Yes.
Very good. So there any changes, deletions, or adds? There being none, motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Cheryl?
Yes.
Mike Bennett?
Yeah.
Frank Johnston?
Yes.
EJ?
Yes.
And I, Mike Rignetta?
Thank you for remembering me, yes.
And I am a yes as well. So those, all minutes have been approved, and we are currently up to date. So thank you very much. All right. Okay, moving on. We've had our joint meeting, so that's great. Rodney, anything you want to say or add before we go ahead and get started?
Uh, nope, just happy to be here.
All right, good. Thanks for being here. Okay, moving on. The next item that I put on there were liaison assignments. So let me see if I can share my screen. So these would be the assignments going in through the, for the next, the next, for this fiscal year, going through, interesting. Going through the end of June, so screen sharing. Nope, nope. Bring that. Can everybody see that?
I don't.
Now we can.
Okay. So Rodney, these are the liaison assignments that the Finance Committee, the members are responsible for. So I think where we were going to slot you in was here with the Veterans Services, the Historic Commission, Historic District Parks, and Board of Health. Those are the ones that Bill Smith had before he got elected, before he was elected to the Board of Selectmen and then, you know, had left his position here. So I'm just gonna put these on, put them under your name for now. Obviously, you'll work with one of us as we get into budget season, which usually starts, I want to say, probably, I'm hoping to start a little earlier this year, like somewhere between November and December. But, you know, as things are with any business, nothing really happens after Thanksgiving and before New Year's. A lot of businesses, especially government businesses, run a lot slower, not a lot's really going on. But January's where things really kind of heat up, and we'll be meeting just after, probably getting into like halfway through February, where we were meeting every Monday going through the budget and determining what's gonna go onto the, into the warrant for that year. So, but when we get to the point of contacting these individuals, the base part of it is just to meet with them, look at what, you know, find out what it is that they are looking for to put onto their budget for next fiscal year. And if there's probably, if there's any changes, try to, you know, kind of understand what those changes are. And then once that's done, we bring that individual or that department representative will bring it to the Finance Committee to be reviewed with the, with the, with the town administrator and the town accountant. And, you know, as we finalize the numbers with the administrator and the accountant. With the town administrator and the town accountant, uh, and, uh, you know, as we finalize the numbers with the, with the administrator and the accountant. That's what will get put on the, um, put on the warrant. But, uh, you as the liaison will be the first one to have a look at what's going on. And ask probably the most appropriate questions, uh, when it comes to those budget numbers. Does it make sense?
Yes. Sorry, my son just came in the room, so I'm just gonna, uh.
No worries.
Keeping him in control.
No worries. Um, everybody satisfied, everyone else, are they satisfied with the, uh, with the assignments that they had? We're just gonna carry them through.
Yep.
I'm fine. Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah.
Very good. Thanks, everybody. So I'll make that change, stop the screen share. Okay, um, I think while we were on the call, we've gotten our first, uh, budget status report, um, that was sent out. Uh, did that go out to everybody or did that just come to me?
Yeah, I know, I got it.
I got it.
Yeah, I think I sent it to everybody or Jackie did.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Lindsay. I appreciate that. So what I look at, when I look at it is, you know, you break down a hundred percent into twelve months. That's eight point three-three percent per month, so you're looking at something, a spend that's gonna be close to around. You know, sixteen percent is the number I'm looking at. And if it's over, you know, is it an encumbrance? Are we putting the money away? You know, we, have we put the money away for the year or are there some overages already? Uh, and then we can, when, when we have a better look at it, we can have a chat with Lindsay, uh, at a later point in time. At the next meeting possibly, uh, with any questions that we have. Rodney, I'll send this out to you, uh, so you have a copy of it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we covered the liaison assignments. Um, correspondence, uh, as may arise is our next agenda item. Um, for those, for the edification of the committee, um, Katie will be leaving us at some point. Um, she is, uh, got a lot on her plate, um, and this is probably one thing that's, uh, just kinda getting in the way of other things she has going on now. It's not with immediate effect and there is no date, so when Robert gets back and we open up a requisition for a secretary. Uh, she'll be here long enough to kinda get them settled and then at that point she will, she will be exiting stage left. Okay. Um, I have not gotten any other correspondence from members of the public through my email channel. I don't know if anyone else has. No. Okay. So if there's no, nothing, uh, does anybody on the committee have anything, any questions or any items they would like to discuss with the committee as a whole as we are all here?
I have one.
Sure.
Uh, the Association of Town Finance Committee's annual meeting is coming up in October.
Yes.
I believe it's October eighteenth and, you know, um, would like to go and I'm sure there are others as well.
Me too.
One of the, one of the topics this year is, um, uh, overrides is, is one of the sessions that they'll have this year. So, be good to hear from some other towns that have played the game and seeing how they've done, yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think we should all go. Um, it certainly makes sense for everyone to be there. It's a good meeting. Um, you can also, you know, have an opportunity to talk to other towns and people in finance committees in other towns. Uh, to see how they're kinda coping with a lot of the stuff, especially around the schools, I think is gonna be the, probably a, a, a topic that they're working on. So. So, um, Lindsay, last year, we just had, I think. Cody signed us all up to go. So I don't know if Robert's gonna do that or if that's something you can do and then, uh, the MMA will invoice the town.
Yeah, okay. I will, yeah, I'll ask.
Okay, please do. And, uh, when the invoice comes in, if we could get that squared away, cause I think we had a bit of an issue last year. Right?
Uh, Mike, um, is it same place Sharon again?
Yes, it is, yeah. October eighteenth, I believe, is the day. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You gonna get us VIP access, Jim?
Yeah.
I'll get you guys.
After we got you elected to the board.
Yeah, yeah, thanks very much. I really.
Yeah.
Guys are heroes. All heroes in my book. Um, so yeah, I'll probably have, yeah, that just means I gotta be there early. That's the, that's the problem.
You do, yes.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, Mike. It's a good, uh, I didn't even think about that, so thank you for mentioning.
You're welcome.
Um, anybody have anything else they wanna chat about while we're all here?
No.
Okay, so we'll close out that agenda item. Uh, next agenda item will be public participation. Um, opening up to the public for anyone who has any comments or questions for the Finance Committee. Seeing no members of the public on, nor hearing any questions or hand raises virtually. We will close out that agenda item and then move on to the next meeting. So the next meeting that we have scheduled is the fifteenth, I believe. Uh, and that is in-person at Town Hall. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Six o'clock.
Yeah.
Six PM, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Probably be a similar agenda, not much really happening right now.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that September or October fifteenth?
September fifteenth.
Thank you.
So our cadence, Rodney, is usually the first and third Mondays of the month. Um, usually the, the first Monday is an in-person meeting and then the second Monday is, or the third Monday is a. Virtual meeting, but we kinda flipped it around to adjust to the, um, to the selectmen. Alright. Anybody have anything else? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Cheryl?
Yes.
Mike Bennett?
Yes.
Frank Johnston?
Yes, to adjourn, please.
EJ?
Yes.
Mike Rignetta?
Yes.
And Rodney Hemingway.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for joining.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Alright, good night, everybody.